February 29th, 2024, the time is 10:07 a.m. I'm calling this meeting to order in attendance. Our commissioners Brooks, Metari, and Duncan, are there changes to the agenda? Hearing none, public comment, there is none. Our first item, recently acquired furniture. So it's now Friday, tomorrow, it'll be 100% our possession. So what I'd like to do is reach out to the elected officials if there are any furniture needs to reach out to Sarah. So she's got the master list and she would know kind of what's available and what might work out for the different departments. So if all the elected officials could go through their, talk to their department heads and find out, you know, you guys are easy. But find out if there is a need for furniture, because I know that we opened up the, especially the coroner, although he's not here, opened up that area upstairs, maybe they need some as well. So anyway, so Bayla just talked about furniture. If any of your departments need furniture, to reach out to Sarah, because we got all that furniture from the place at the airport. All right, any questions on that? Item two, Central Committee signups for building opening and closing. I have a signup sheet here and if anybody's interested in doing this, it's not something that I can do every single month anymore. So I don't know if you want me to just pass it around.
Is this for just the Republican or Democrat?
It's just the Republican Central Committee, yeah.
Is there a need on the standpoint of Democrats?
I haven't heard, I haven't heard. They weren't meeting with us for a while and so I don't know if they've come back and started doing that as well. So, yep.
And just for clarification, looks like if we divided this up equally, maybe a couple months each?
Uh huh.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, okay. Okay, any questions on signups? It's mostly just between 5:00 and 6:30 that they need it open and then anywhere from 8:00 to 10:00 or 11:00 that they need it closed. Just depends on what's happening that night. And I'll make sure that everybody has the signup list once we get through that. And then if anybody has a last minute conflict, which has happened before, it's easy just to trade or call somebody. And I'm usually here and able to open for them most times. So, all right, nothing further on that. County Building Storage Cleanout. We have several locations here on campus and I believe at the ancillary building or the reprographics building, building and grounds, there's also storage there. So what Greg Manley, our building and grounds manager, would like is for all departments to go through what they have in storage and determine if it needs to be discarded or kept in that. And there's, it's not just documents, there's decor, there's supplies and equipment. So if we can do that, maybe Sarah, you can send out a reminder email to all the elected officials that we do that. In the process of getting HVAC for the admin building, there is one storage unit that'd be a good place for boilers and I understand that that's probably one of the best ways to heat and cool the building and so, or just heat the building. So if we can get that storage area cleaned out, and I don't have that one identified, then it would be better, give more options for our HVAC. Yes?
Commissioner, excuse me if I missed it, but you said there's various locations? Did you cite the specific locations?
I'll have Sarah send that out, but there's a vault here, there's then something at building and grounds. So there's different, there's a few different places where people store that. So Grace, you've been here a long time, do you know offhand where they all are in this building?
The only other place I can think of is the annex building.
Yeah.
The annex building does-
Can you hit your, sorry?
Yeah, the annex building does have some things in it.
But I mean specifically in this building?
Other than the vaults down here.
Okay.
And by the elevator.
Okay.
I had heard also, since we're talking about storage, I had heard that the county had contracted for outside storage, a missile silo somewhere in Washington, that there's records there. One of my long-term staff members had mentioned that to me that, and I don't know if that's still the case, so are you referring to that as well?
Nope, I have no knowledge of that whatsoever.
Okay.
Yeah, we wouldn't need any HVAC equipment to go out there, so. All right, anything else on storage cleanout? And then all, and you can also contact Greg to ask him, hey, is some of my stuff in your building? And he'll be happy to give you that information. He was supposed to be here today, but he had something else he had to attend to. Okay, any other questions on storage? Okay. And item four, policy for legal advice. Mr. Mortensen, please.
Thank you. Is anybody able to get the attachments that I submitted? My chain says not, or copies? Pass them out.
Mr. Mortensen, when you get back to your seat, would you flick your mic on too?
Yes. Thank you. Chair, you've given one. Thank you.
Okay, Stan Mortensen for the record. So as you can all see from the bottom of this document, this is a policy that was adopted March 2017 when Barry McHugh was still in the office. And my civil deputies have asked that I just kind of remind the county that it exists and ask everybody to adhere to it as much as possible. Long story short, my office is statutory obligated to provide advice to the county officials and we're more than happy to do that. And as everybody knows, a lot of times people come to my office seeking verbal advice for urgent matters. And we're going to continue to accommodate people as much as possible, but some things just aren't that urgent, even though they may feel urgent. And sometimes my office has to prioritize things and for a lot of other reasons, we're requesting that this policy be, you know, re-minded to everybody. So I just want to go down a couple of things, just to kind of argue in support of everybody following this policy. This will help manage legal requests. When an attorney is out of the office and it's, and a request is written down using this form, we're able to reroute it to another available attorney. If the request again is for an emergency opinion and we consider that to be something that is needed within 10 or less working days, you know, then we can prioritize it. This will allow us to keep a record of a legal opinion for future reference by the elected official. It'll help mitigate against misunderstanding of any legal opinions provided. When we have an informal verbal opinion, they are more likely to be misunderstood or maybe inadvertently misrepresented, especially on complicated issues. This will assist my office in sharing information among our attorneys so that the most informed legal opinion is provided. Even though everybody has their own, you know, contact within my office and even though everybody has, you know, attorney-client privilege regarding specific things, we do have frequent roundtable meetings where we can, while protecting attorney-client privilege, still talk in generalities about the status of law and, you know, hypothetical situations. And sometimes, you know, consulting online databases and law books isn't good enough. It's really helpful for us to roundtable between three, four, or five different attorneys and get different perspectives. And so having a written request will really help us do that. This will also assist my office in tracking the need for legal services for each elected official, which will then assist us in obtaining approval from the board, maybe in the future, to hire additional attorneys. And I'll just tell you, that's a current discussion my office is having right now. As you know, we have four civil attorneys. I'm thinking about what it would look like if we would add a fifth in an effort to help spread out the workload, increase the speed of legal opinions that we can provide and other things. And so this policy and written request will really help us facilitate these goals. The other thing is, you know, to the extent that any elected official or department head is trying to triangulate within my office to get different opinions, this will kind of help us track that and provide some continuity. Not that that happens a whole lot, but it's been known to happen over the years. And so again, I just wanted to remind everybody about the policy and to the extent you wonder why we have it, those are the reasons why. So if anybody has any comments or questions, I'd be more than happy to talk to you about it.
So I have a question.
Sure.
So we do have an assigned, each elected has an assigned attorney?
Mm-hmm.
And for, if we're asking a question of our assigned attorney, do you still want us to use this form?
We would prefer it, yes. Yep, and-
How do we submit the form?
Um-
It's on a-
Yeah, there's a-
I believe it's on Casey Place, but the form, it probably needs to be formatted a little bit better because it's not very much room sometimes to put an opinion versus via sending an email on there. But it is on Casey Place, or it was at one point.
And we can revisit the form, reformat it, and maybe my office will go through the process of sending a dummy request to see how it comes in and how user-friendly it is and if we need to kind of update that, we can certainly do that. But yes, to answer your question, we would still prefer that requests come in this way. In all honesty, again, even if it's a verbal request or an emergency request, what does happen is my attorneys will go back and document it themselves. But if they're, if they have to do that with every request, that's going to take a long time. And then there's even, mistakes can be made, you know? If you make a verbal request to me and I give you a verbal response, five minutes later, an hour later, a day later, you know, I'm going to go back to my office and memorialize that in my notes for record-keeping purposes. There's always the chance that I'm going to write something down, not 100% accurate compared to the way we discussed it yesterday, right? And so if it originates as a written request from you or anybody else, there's zero chance for misinterpretation.
For the record, our office always wants a written response, so we're good.
Yeah.
I have another question, and I apologize, but we're all in the same room and so we can get the answer. Several times Bayla has told me that Pat Braden is no longer, he believes Pat Braden is no longer our legal counsel. We are under the impression that Pat is our legal counsel. Could you just clarify that for me?
It's my understanding that Pat is still your legal counsel.
Okay, thank you.
And if I could interject in that, because I actually did have a conversation two days ago with Pat. I asked him specifically that question. He did email to me an assignment sheet where it does not agree with that. He actually indicated on the phone to me two days ago that Dave is your new attorney, but Pat has been working with you on some existing cases and he's continuing to work with you on some existing cases until those are seen to fruition. That's what was told, that's what I was told on the phone two days ago.
Well, let me just clarify that then. It's been known for my attorneys to swap assignments or maybe even to assist another attorney with their assignments. There's a chance that maybe there was a swap that I'm not aware of. So let me talk to my attorneys and I'll get the most updated information to you.
Because we do have, we've already asked Pat to kind of babysit the text.
To babysit something that occurs much later in the year and he's agreed to do that. So if there's going to, if we could receive some clarification on that, that'd be great. A couple of other questions that I have is that I'm always focused on the definitional terms. You know, there's a lot of times where I'll call Pat and I just need him to help me articulate what the issue might be before I can even ask him a question. Is there a difference between legal advice, where I'm just sitting there saying, hey, Stan, help me figure out how to, you know, ask the right question, versus an illegal opinion? When I think of a legal opinion, it's written correspondence to a very well-defined articulated question, not just, hey, help me figure out this issue. Is there a distinction that you're thinking of in this process, legal opinion, legal advice, legal counsel, or are they all just all, get it?
You know, I would maybe need a more specific example before I could answer that. What I can tell you is, is if you think that you have a request from my office that might not be what you would consider to be a legal opinion or legal advice, maybe just help articulating a sentence or a paragraph, right? Go ahead and reach out to the attorney, you know, call him up on the phone and ask him a question. If they respond to you and say, hey, I would really like you to submit this in writing, this explains what's going on. Or maybe even before you ask him a question, say, hey, I know you want everything in writing, but I don't know that what I'm about to ask you really falls within this policy. If it does, just let me know. And then just give it a shot, right? But to the extent that you call or ask my office for verbal, you know, opinion or advice and we want to debate on what's an opinion or advice, you know, go ahead and call them up and ask them. And if they're willing and able to answer you over the phone, that's great. But you know, there may be times where you call them up, ask for a verbal advice, favor, whatever you want to call it. If they turn around and say, look, I really need this submitted in writing, I want you to know where that's coming from.
I would expect that, and that's the way it's worked in the past and I thought it's worked real well. What is the response time that we would expect when you submit this? Is it that day, that week, within two weeks?
Sure. We're going to try to get you, you know, an answer as fast as possible. What's fast to you might not be, you know, what I consider fast or what Pat or Darren or Dave or Demi might be considered fast, but you know, if you will let us know, if we don't ask you, let us know what your timeframe is. You know, I might say, well, you know, I've got 100 other things to do and I think if I get back to you within 10 days, that's going to be pretty quick. But if you tell me I would, I really need this within three days, that's going to allow me or my attorneys to look at everything else we've got going on and decide, you know, how to prioritize. So all I can say is we're going to give you, you know, what you're looking for as fast as possible. We have to balance that with everything else we have going on, with all the other requests we have. What really helps us is to know what your timeframe is.
Prior to you joining, Barry Black played a role as kind of the supervisor of civil counsel and I think he did a lot of that roundtable discussion. Is that something that you would consider as maybe that additional hire or is it just a worker civil attorney? Or are you, I think you're playing that role right now.
I'm essentially playing that role right now. We'll meet once a month and do some roundtabling. If we need to meet more often, we can do that. If we don't need to meet every month, we'll cancel or reschedule. So we are currently doing that. And so, yeah, in a sense, that's still happening. But yes, you know, if, if I can get another civil attorney, it allows another person to roundtable in the future, you know, maybe there will be somebody, you know, doing more of what I'm doing, but for the time being, yeah, that's me.
One of the things that I've recognized and I appreciate it is, I mean, you've got a really big job and most of these civil attorneys that you have are doing massive amount of work, right? One thing that I want to, and I've always been cognizant of, I don't want to burden you guys on silly requests. So if there is something that we are doing incorrectly that we can improve on to better focus, and maybe this is it, but we need that feedback. And I would encourage you to provide that feedback to all the elected officials that sometimes we need to hear those words.
Okay.
Stan, I have a question, if I may. Earlier, a few moments ago, you mentioned triangulation or triangulate. Could you elaborate on what you mean by that?
Oh, you know, there's a lot of phrases I could use from my law enforcement days. We called it cop shopping, you know? When mom tells you no, you go ask dad. You know, there's a lot of ways to kind of, you know, re-characterize that, but again, I'm not going to give any examples, but in the, in the history of Cootney County and department heads or elected officials seeking advice, that's been known to happen. You know, my office wants to provide competent legal advice and yes, we recognize that attorneys can disagree on opinions. If you ask 100 attorneys the same question, you might get 100 different responses. I understand if a department head goes to their assigned attorney, they may not get the legal advice they're looking for that they want. It's not beyond the possibility that you could go to another attorney if they'll listen to you and maybe they'll give you another legal opinion. I can tell you, when we roundtable things, we don't all agree on things. And so I'm not sitting here trying to say an elected official or department head should never go to another attorney and get another opinion, but it's nice when the attorneys know what's going on, you know? If I give somebody an opinion, I'm not going to get offended if you go to another attorney to try to get a different opinion. It is what it is, but it's nice when the attorneys know that's happening.
And I would offer that it's probably nice for elected to know that as well. It recently came to my attention that, that you approached my attorney asking him to reconsider a legal opinion that he gave me. And, you know, that's concerning to me. Almost seems like that would be triangulation in the reverse. We can have a conversation about that offline.
If you'd like to have a conversation about that right now, since you brought it up, I will.
No, no.
I'll leave that up to you, but I just, again, I don't think this is proper to be talking about right now, Bayla.
Right, no, and I, and I agree, and I note that item number seven touches upon that, that refraining from discussing legal opinions in public meetings. And I, just as a matter of record, I recall back to December 28th when we had the discussion about the audio recordings. At that time, I did ask for, that my attorney be present and I asked about a legal attorney for the situation. I did not want to have a public discussion about a legal opinion and that's why I ended up not asking my question in that meeting. So I just really want to put that on the record.
Well, what I can tell you, Bayla, in a general response, which I think is appropriate for this meeting, and it's, it's part of the reason why we want these items written down and it's part of the reason why my office has frequent meetings to roundtable things. It's been known to happen where an elected official will seek a legal opinion, but that elected official hasn't shared with the attorney all of the information that attorney might need to give an adequate legal response. If that happens and that attorney later finds out that maybe if they had more information, they would have given a different legal opinion, it is proper for that attorney to reconsider their previous legal advice to see if their legal advice has changed. Sometimes the advice will change, sometimes it won't. So I'll just leave it at that.
I will, I think that we'll have an excellent example of that situation at the 11 o'clock hour today, but one thing that I just want to clarify in my own mind, my understanding of statute is that the prosecuting attorney represents the actual elected official and that you delegate your resources as you choose. So I think it's wholly appropriate that the prosecuting attorney asks questions like that because it is his reputation, his responsibility, his authority solely. And that the attorneys working for him, the civil attorneys, are working under his direction. I'll leave it at that.
Since this came up, I have a question. It's my understanding that the prosecuting attorney's office represents the county. So if the prosecuting attorney is in the room representing the county and I have a question, like, I don't have my own prosecuting attorney who represents me. Steve doesn't have a prosecuting attorney that represents him. There is a prosecuting attorney that represents the county. Is that, is that correct or am I misunderstanding?
The statute reads that the prosecuting attorney has the duty to give advice to the Board of County Commissioners and other public officers of this county, when requested in all public matters arising in the conduct of the public business entrusted to the care of such officers. So me and my office, we represent the county commissioners and all other public officers of the county.
In their official capacity.
In their official capacity, when requested. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
I have a question.
I have one more question.
Go ahead, Assessor.
One of the questions that has occurred to me is, you know, conflicts can and do arise, even between elected officials. In the course of making recommendations to the board, one of the requirements is that we, we share a legal opinion with the board when we place a matter on the agenda. Now, we all know that there is something called the attorney-client privilege. And, and I'm concerned that when a matter is being presented to the board, that the requirement right now as it sits to place a matter on the agenda, requiring that an elected official share their legal opinion, that's, I would, I would, I'm concerned that that would infringe on the attorney-client privilege if we're required to share that with the board in order to submit it as an agenda item. I just, I don't, I just throw that out there. You know, if perhaps the legal opinion can be genericized, that might make a difference.
Well, I think there's a distinction too, whether it is a conflict between that elected official and the county itself or the board. That obviously would fall into the category that I think you're arguing, but if it is a legal opinion that the county's exposure is going to be jointly shared, to me, it seems totally appropriate.
And it's not required to get on the agenda.
Okay.
Business meetings, when you have contracts and things of that nature, that's when it's required.
Understand, thank you.
Yeah, so just to get something on the agenda doesn't require.
Thank you for the clarification.
Well, Stan, I didn't realize that this discussion item would be so spicy today. You know, what this really looks like to me is a workflow management issue.
Exactly.
And I always cringe a little when I see paper in 21st century time period. This reminds me of like trouble tickets in the IT world, where people submit a request for support and then it gets triaged and then sent to the appropriate person. And I just wonder if there's not a way where we can avoid the paper, because I think it would be easier if you had kind of a champion in your office who could get the requests, triage them, and disperse them to the correct people, get back to the elected officials, you can expect the response within. And that way, there's a proper expectation that's being managed along with your resources because they're very limited.
That's something that can be considered. Just for clarification, if, I mean, if this is something that's done digitally, I mean, you use the word paper. Is the fact that it's done digitally, does that resolve your concern?
Well, if there's a good process for managing it, yes. I mean, it's just when I see paper, I'm always a little leery of like, okay.
Because what we can do is, you know, everybody has access to this form. And, you know, I don't know that the current process is to fill the form out online and submit it online. I don't know if it's maybe the form gets downloaded, you fill it out digitally and then you email it directly to your assigned attorney. I think that might, you know, if that's the way it works, that could resolve your concern, right? Because then only your assigned attorney's seeing it.
Stan, if I may interject, I see that in the policy item number four, it says that the requests be made via email. So is it correct to say that if our email substantially covers these items in the form, but we just do it in an email, if it covers at least these components, then we will have submitted our request electronically to the office?
Okay, well, number four says elected officials and their designees are encouraged to make appointments when they feel it is necessary for an in-person discussion with an attorney. Appointment should be made via email to the attorney and legal assistant and include a brief statement of the issue to be discussed. So-
Yeah, I'm actually, yeah, I'm looking at that and trying to imagine in my mind how I would do that and-
You would email and ask for an appointment.
Okay, so we wouldn't want to put components of this in that email?
Well, what it says is a brief statement of the issue. So just, you know, a little one sentence, hey, like, what's the topic? You know, if you come to me or there's over the phone or text or email Bayla and you say, can I meet with you tomorrow at 9:00 a.m.? I'm going to say, sure, but I'm going to follow it up with, can you give me any idea what we're going to talk about? It could be one word or one sentence. I don't think that's going to be, you know, disclosing attorney-client privilege.
No, I was just trying to find a way to accommodate what Bruce's, I agree, I'd like to see something more electronic and I just thought maybe an email could do it.
Or just a primary person, you know, a primary point of contact, because that way it keeps your attorneys from being interrupted.
We can look at that, we can look at that. I mean, in a sense, what would happen is if you download this form digitally, fill it out digitally and, you know, email it to your attorney individually, they're able to keep their statistics. And then at the end of the year, whatever, whenever I ask for them, I'm going to ask for numbers, you know, and there's not going to be any swapping of attorney-client privilege. It's, this allows us to keep a record and stats. So, I mean, are you asking that maybe an independent, a third person receive them on behalf of all four attorneys and then they distribute them?
What I'm suggesting is that for the $500 an hour people, don't have them doing $25 an hour work.
I understand.
So if they're doing admin work to organize things, that's a bad use of their time.
Okay.
You know, and so that's all, because you have a resource management issue. I mean, look, you know- I mean, look, you know, one of the attorneys has a pretty big case coming up, that's going to take a lot of time. We're waiting on responses from that person, you know? So where's the overflow? How can we manage that resource? And these are not really difficult questions, but I understand that, you know, they're going to triage certain cases, and maybe someone else in your office, if they can triage, simple questions versus siloing, for example, if the assessor has an issue, well, that should stick with that one attorney, because that, you know, start to finish. But there might be another question that the assessor has that any other attorney could answer quickly.
No, and I just wanted to make sure I understood your question before I take it back to my office and we come up with a solution.
And I'm happy to work with you on that stuff, because I deal with that stuff personally with just employees. Some of them are very busy, and I don't like it when other people contact them, because it takes them away from very significant projects.
That's a righteous concern. So what I can tell you is, I'll go back to my office, and when we meet, we'll discuss it, and we'll try to implement something.
And the other thing, Stan, is one of the things you mentioned with this form is if your attorney isn't available, and you don't always know that they're not available, if you fill out the form, it can get...
That person's going to know, yeah.
It can get rerouted, but if it's just going, if I'm emailing it directly to my attorney, no one else is going to know I emailed, and if they happen to have suddenly gone out sick and, you know, can't look at their email for three days, it's just not being...
No, I agree with you.
So the way it used to work is we would always copy Lindsay.
And then that's what I was thinking, is one or two, or both of the legal assistants might have to be that person, and that way they can even say, because usually the attorney would maybe include them on the response, and that way the legal assistant, or whoever that person is, they're going to know, hey, it's been two days, it's been 10 days, and I haven't seen a response yet. They can poke and prod the attorney to make sure that we're getting back to people timely.
So when I got here, that's the way it would work. I would fill out the electronic form, send it to Lindsay, and if I wanted a speedier answer, I would send it to the attorney as well. If I didn't care, if it was just, then I would just send it to Lindsay only.
Sure.
And so that's how it used to work.
What about creating like an OnBase form, that it would go to the admin person it's supposed to, versus the attachment and the Word document? I mean, you can convert this to PDF, it'd probably be easier to fill out, but what do you think about doing that, and then it's emailed to the appropriate, probably Lindsay at that point?
Yeah, yeah, that should be pretty...
Well, I just want, to the extent there's a public records request, you know, a lot of these things we're not going to provide, because they're protected under attorney-client privilege, and we still need to gather that information and decipher it before we know what to release and whatnot, and just decide what's attorney-client privilege and what's not. And, you know, it's one thing for IT to have to check emails, you know, it's another thing if we have to check a second or third database to find this information, so...
I think it would just go straight to the person you want to, it'd just be IT creating the form, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
We can talk about that.
I would prefer not to use OnBase. I mean, I think using email's a little bit more fluid. Yeah.
It would be sent, it'd be sent to their office via email. It's the application of how you're filling it out.
No, right.
And you can copy yourself on the email, too, like you do in the business meeting?
There's more than one way to skin a cat. Well, I'll bring it back to my office, we'll talk about it, and we'll, I'll update everybody here.
If we can non-torture, torture animals in the process, that would be happy, too. So, all right, anything else on this subject? Hey, public comment? 10:40, we need to adjourn, thank you.